I'd like to call the October 14th Board of Education Workshop Regular Meeting Open to Order. If we could have a moment of silence. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice that this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford, Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call please, Mrs. Patagno? Thank you. Mr. Stovich?
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Guarino? Mrs. Jurgensen?
Here.
Mr. Lippi?
Here.
Mrs. Marquardt?
Here.
Mrs. Raccano?
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Here.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
District Administration Report, Dr. Kitchen.
Yes, we're going to actually skip ahead before we do the HIB self-assessment or the district testing presentation. We are going to let our student go first because I think she's got some homework to get done and we want to make sure we get her out of here at a reasonable hour. So Marina Petrasilo, welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Board of Education and other members of the community. My name is Marina Petrasilo and I am the Student Council President. I'm happy to share the news from West Milford High School since the last time we met. On September 18th, the PTSO and Student Council hosted the largest homecoming dance yet. Everyone looked great while they danced the night away in the black and gold cafeteria. The royal court was announced at the dance and they were freshman Sophia Cologne and Loken Trout, sophomores Kaylee Schlamp and J.L. Hobel, juniors Alyssa Pentegor and Owen Munir, and seniors Selma Sadem and Jacob Price. The West Milford PTSO held the senior parking lot, parking spot painting days on Sunday, September 28th and Sunday, October 5th, and had the largest group ever paint their spots. Go Class of 2026. If you would like to check them out, please visit the PTSO Facebook page or take a stroll in the lot after school around a weekend. They were very creative. One day, we hope to have the whole lot painted. College visits and applications are in full swing. Seniors and juniors can sign up in the guidance, sign up in guidance to meet with the representatives who come to school from various institutions. The senior flash trip was held October 3rd. They attended the Hudson River Valley Cruise and had a great time. On another note, the Highlander Band hosted the Highlander Marching Band Classic on Saturday, October 4th, and performed their show High Voltage at the competition. They did a great job, but since they hosted, they did not get to receive awards. However, they will be competing in the MetLife Stadium Open Band Classics on Saturday, October 25th, and we wish them the best of luck. Also taking place on October 25th, right here, the annual Spooktacular Trunk or Treat and Haunted Hallway, a joint collaboration between the high school and the middle school student councils, the high school PTSO, the Police Department and PBA, and the West Milford Community Services and Recreation. The trunk or treat will be held in the senior parking lot and is free for all who can attend, and the haunted hallway will take place in Macapin and does have a small fee. Ticketing information for the haunted hallway should be on the district website as you do need to reserve your time slot. We are also seeking trunkers. If you would like to participate, please contact Nicole Petrasilo at the high school, and we will also be seeking candy donations from anyone who might be able to contribute. There is a collection bin at the PAL in room 123 at the high school, or you can go to the black and gold bin at the front door of the high school. Clearly labeled Spooktacular Donation, any contributions are much appreciated. Thursday, October 9th, the Guidance Department held steps, presentations for students and parents in each grade level outlining the pathways to college or other alternative post-high school. It was well received and those junior and senior parents seem particularly attentive since applications will be going out soon. The week of October 10th was the Week of Respect. Student Council organized the following activities. Monday was Chalk the Walk with Words of Kindness. Tuesday was Team Up for Respect with Sports Jerseys. Wednesday was Cozy Jammy Day for Dreaming of a World with Respect. Thursday, we made a Chain Reaction of Kindness where students created a paper chain of positive messages and encouragement. It is hanging outside the art rooms. And Friday was our Respect Our Rescuers where we wrote notes of thanks to our Police Department and we are creating goodie basket of treats for them. We would like to go back to recognize the Athletic Department for organizing the celebration of Jen Powell's historic achievement, and we were excited to attend the October 10th Hall of Fame and Hometown Pride Event during the school day and that evening. Yesterday, the underclassmen all took the PSATs while seniors had a college visitation day. We know everyone did their best on that test and the administration went smoothly despite the terrible weather. Underclassmen Retake Day for photographs is this Friday, October 17th, for students who need them. Interest meetings and registrations for winter sports are in full swing. If you need to register your student for a sport or any club and activity, please visit ArbiterSports.com. Don't forget about the T-Mobile Sweepstakes that were entered in. Congratulations to West Milford High School for two years in a row winning $5,000 in T-Mobile's Friday Night 5G Lights Contest. We win this money by posting school community life with hashtags FN5GL and hashtag Sweepstakes and by tagging at T-Mobile and at WM Athletic Department. Keep up the posting, Highlanders, so we can get to the next level prize. Your books are for sale for $90 as of today, but prices will go up January 1st. So if you're looking for a lower price, now would be the time to buy. You can buy them at yearbookforever.com. Next week, October 20th through 24th, is School Violence Awareness and Peace Week. Student Council has planned Peaceful Plaid. It's a bright idea to keep the peace, hoodies for harmony, Stick With Peace stickers, and a pledge poster. We are one, and we are One Heard Black and Gold Day. For Halloween, students are allowed to wear school-appropriate costumes. No face coverings allowed. Hope everyone has a great night trick-or-treating. Finally, we will be off for Teachers Convention November 6th and 7th. That's all for now. Thank you so much for your time.
Marina, thank you so much. We, you know, I've been here for a little over a year at this point. Had the chance to hear a few different student reps speak, and I got to say that if our student reps are any indication of the quality of human being and student coming out of our schools, you guys are doing an incredible job because every single speech that we've gotten from student reps has been great. So excellent job, very thorough. You kind of put us to shame when it's time for us to speak because you give way more details than we do. Much appreciated. Keeping it in the family, possibly. I know we have some VFW awards to discuss. Are we maybe waiting on somebody? Do we want to postpone?
He's on his way.
So why don't we wait? Okay, so we're going to hold off on the VFW piece. We will jump into the HIB self-assessment scores. So board members, you have the self-assessment grades in your executive content for this meeting. It just goes through the self-assessment and what it is. And again, this is a self-assessment. This is us identifying the areas that we have various programs and things in place for HIB. What happens is this gets submitted to the state and the state will certify that as long as they don't see any issues with what we're sharing with them. But just to kind of give you the brief overview, so it's out of a possible of 78 total points. And to give you an idea of where we're at for each school, actually we received 74 points, Maple 75, Marshall 75, PK 76, UGL 74, Macapin 76, and the high school 75. Again, all out of 78. So that's where we're on the self-report. When we get the certified number from the official certification from the state, I'll let you know that those scores are official, but as right now, that's just what's being submitted. And we put a statement of assurance out there that we've shared that information out with all of you. So up next, we do have our district testing presentation. I was trying to get Nicole in and out of here before we got started on that because it could be long, but the, but not as long as we've done in the past. I know last year, we went through a lot of data and our testing coordinators do a really, really good job of making sure all that information is compiled. What we did do this year is all of the information in the full presentation is available to you, but the presentation is going to focus a little bit more on some of the highlights and areas of improvement. If you have questions that are outside the scope of what is being discussed, you're welcome to ask those questions. You can ask them during the presentation. You can ask them at the end. You can ask them as a follow-up in a committee, whatever you'd like. But we wanted to, in the interest of time, we wanted to make sure we were kind of highlighting some of these specific areas to focus on rather than going through every single data point because as you know, there are many. The full presentation is 50 slides long with a lot of information on each slide. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dan to kind of take the lead on that.
All right. Thanks for the little overview. I sent an email to the board earlier with the full presentation attached. That full presentation is what Brian was just referring to with all of the, all of the slides that we went through in detail in the past. After the feedback, we reduced it. So tonight's presentation is going to be probably around 20, 24 slides with, we believe to be a lot of the information that you do typically ask us about. The full presentation is available in board docs. Tonight's presentation is the one that you have in print, so you can follow along and see it from there. Also, one of our new district technicians is here tonight, J.C. Kames. He and I will have the presentation posted on the website before the evening is over. So we're going to present it here tonight, and then it will be posted on our website for the, for the public to review. If you have questions about any of it, let us know tonight or in the future. Before we go on, I just want to say thank you once again to the administrative presence in the building. It's been a nice, you know, sort of annual tradition now where our administrative team comes out to support and discuss the, you know, all the work that we've been doing together to, you know, work on and improve test scores and, you know, make sure that we are getting closer and closer to grade level instruction with, with the, you know, strong mindful approach to how we address the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So again, I thank everyone for coming out and being part of the presentation. A number of the people in the room will come up and talk about a few little components. So that's all for the intro, and I'm going to move out. And if you're seated in the front here, you might want to move to see the screen. We're going to audible and switch to the VFW. That's okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Just in time.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Nicole Petrasilo and I am a teacher at the high school, and it is my distinct honor and pleasure to be here this evening to present to you some awards. And the high school in particular, when I was announced as the National VFW Teacher of the Year, in turn, it meant that West Milford High School was also selected as the National VFW High School of the Year.
Oh, wow.
The Smart Mayor Education Award was established in 1999 and was named after former VFW National Commander John Smart and retired VFW Quartermaster General Larry Mayer. The award recognizes our nation's top schools for their exceptional commitment to teaching Americanism and patriotism to their students. These schools and their teachers care deeply about America and its children. We are concerned about the perpetuation of America's noblest traditions and its highest ideals. It is our responsibility to promote civic duty, flag etiquette, volunteerism, and respect for our country and for our military service members. So at this time, I would love to call to the podium, oops, would you like to speak? I'm sorry.
Guys, go ahead.
Mr. Matthew Striens, the principal of West Milford High School, to receive some awards.
So yeah, and I'll say a couple of words. My kids went through the system, ladies and gentlemen, doctors, superintendents, assistants. Everybody else, how are you?
This is Rudy Hoss. He's the commander of the power VFW.
Yes, he didn't know that already. Sorry I was late. I was at a stakeholder meeting down in Totoa, and y'all know 23 North. So my kids went through this system, and I love this school system. They went from, when I retired out of the military in 2012, and the last one finished this previous year. She's now in welding school. Way to go. The school system has been phenomenal. And what makes it phenomenal was not only y'all who set the standards for them, but the teachers and everybody, you know, the teachers, everybody that works in the schools from the top down and bottom up. They all support each other and, you know, hey, they got my kids through clean noses, so that's good. So when I became commander, there was a program for Teacher of the Year, and I was like, all right, what do we got? So I stumbled upon Nicole, nominated her, and quick story, she showed up at my, she showed up at my house on the last day with a packet. Ladies and gentlemen, had to be about an hour and a half there. I was like, Jesus, it's supposed to be a few pages. The accolades that she has received throughout her tenure, throughout her career as an educator, from the county, from the township, has been phenomenal. She won hands down at district level. I'm also the district commander. I had nothing to do with the judging. So for Perse County, she won. She got submitted up to state. When I went up to state, they were like, there was no, now they get graded. How many of you all are educators in this room? Okay, y'all are the worst graders of educators. Okay, you're the most criticals and most, you know, finger pointing as best you can. They stood up and they said, hands down, she's in, especially for all the stuff that she does for the Americanism, the patriotism, and for veterans. Y'all know what she does. She went up to state, no problem. She goes up to national. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll tell you, on the second week of August, when I was in Columbus, Ohio, the mecca of nightlife of the United States of America, facetiously, of course, to watch Nicole walk across the stage and receive the honor of National High School Teacher of the Year, and then not only to hear, and then to hear my post as the winner. Ladies and gentlemen, that was phenomenal. I never thought I'd be at that level. There I was. There we were. There she was. And, you know, the National Commander in Chief, Alfred Lippert, had not, he saw the packet. It was nothing but, he had, you can't get anything on it. So with that being said, as she said, you know, she got her stuff and all the accolades and everybody's like, woo, when they start reading her bullet points. She's a phenomenal teacher, but she doesn't do it alone. She has the support of y'all and of this man right here to allow, that allows her to do the things she does for veterans, for the students, and to impart the Americanism, the patriotism, and everything that West Milford stands for. And I am very proud to still be here in this town. I've only been here for 13 years. Planning to be at least another 13 more, so we'll see. No, probably, I'll probably die here. With that being said, we can do it. You want to do, you want to go first?
Sure.
All right, Matt, if you will.
I would like to present this apple to the West Milford Township High School School of the Year for grades nine through 12. It's two pieces.
And then this big old booklet here, Veterans of Foreign Wars in the United States of America, 2024-2025, Smart Mayor VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher Award, awarded to West Milford Township High School, West Milford, New Jersey, in recognition of being selected the State VFW High School Smart Mayor School Award winner for citizenship education. It witnessed the arrow of, we have arrow on two, our hands, and the official seal of Veterans of Foreign Wars, United States of America, Alfred Lippert and Dan West. And of course, all his things come with a picture of him, so.
And one last thing, on the national level, a $1,000 award will go to West Milford High School. Thank you.
Way to go.
Just want to congratulate Nicole. I mean, what a tremendous honor. You represent like the very best that West Milford has to offer. I know just sitting next to you in the stands, the wrestling passion you bring to it. When I saw you, it's all I need to know, your wrestling mom, your son's shoulder pop out of joint, you're just tough and ready to go. We knew you were someone special. So tremendous work in our, you know, English playing source department, your contributions to after-school activities, National Honor Society, all those, all those great things you do. I think you host the now annual Mike Rose trivia night. Very well.
Yes, we need to make the tool comfortable for the order three.
PTSO, you know, we could probably just keep going. So thank you, congratulations. And it seems like you won something, but Matt got all the treats.
I got all the same ones, and I thank you all for your support because I could not have done it without you. And without Matt, you were one of my letters of recommendation.
I want to echo that. I want to echo that as well because I think it feels a little anticlimactic that we're receiving awards from you. And I think we're burying the lead here. You're the National Teacher of the Year for the VFW. That really is a big deal. So yes, just congratulations and really happy to have you.
The owner of a lifetime, truly.
Nicole, why don't we do a picture with the board real quick?
Sure, please.
Make us proud, Nicole.
Everybody knows I love taking pictures with the board. Randy.
Rudy.
We got to bring, we got to bring a guy who spearheads.
Why don't you come around back here?
We're all going over there.
Stand, we can, I don't know, what's the easiest way to wrestle?
By the flag, is it good? We can bring the flag up?
Marina, you're our student rep.
Get Marina in there. Come on, Marina, get in there.
The recipient. I feel like you should probably come and show the picture.
Do you want me to take the picture?
As soon as somebody out there, I'll take one and send it to us. It's usually Doug.
Stop standing behind me.
Say Nicole. Say West Milford. West Milford. All right, everybody look at Nicole and give her a rock back.
All right, let me know when you do help with that project.
Thank you for your research.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a great rest of your evening.
Well, we will.
She's got homework. It's very cold.
We're the West Milford Blanket Act.
No, I'm good. I'm good right now.
We keep talking about the temperature. We're good? All good. All right. All right. Sorry to hard to switch from that to the testing presentation. So this is our annual, annual sharing of NJSLA results. It's always fun for me to open it up and then immediately hand it off to Dr. Melos, our K through eight testing coordinator, to talk through some of the specifics, a little history of the assessment, a little range of the scoring, and then we'll get into some of our, our details, co-analysis, some of the things we want to celebrate and some of the areas that we need to grow. More with our action plans and ideas for how we're going to, how we're going to continue growth in the future. So Dr. Melos?
So thank you, everybody. If anybody wants to delay the testing scores down, now's the time. No, thanks. And thank you, Dr. Kitchen, Mr. Novak, because last year, obviously, we had over 53, I think, slides altogether. So it's about a two and a half hour presentation. So we are going to cut this down quite a bit. All right, let's do it. Maybe. All right. All right, prehistory. In 2015, as everyone's aware, we had Park, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers, that of course replaced HSPA. Four years later, in 2019, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was reconfigured, aka NJSLA. We then, of course, went into the COVID period, no tests administered 2020 to 2021. But again, always want to give a shout out to our township and district because we were one of the few, very few districts that participated in the optional start-strength fall assessment. So at least we had kind of that heads up of that first benchmark, where were we during COVID, especially our kids from grades four through 10. And then eventually, a year later, NJD, we of course mandated that start-strength assessment in 2021, and we kind of became mentors for other districts because of that, which actually was, you know, awesome to see for West Milford again, where again, we were familiar with the assessment itself and then provide, of course, that feedback to those districts that did not take it in 2020. All right, May 2024, I purposely have that date just to go over again the history of NJSLA, at least here in West Milford. ELA, of course, grades three through nine, math grades three through eight, and then you get into algebra, geometry, algebra two. Those are separated tests, of course. And then science grades five, eight, and 11. All right, more change, yes. Just this past summer, late August, at the NJD, we announced that Pearson no longer will be hosting NJSLA, at least through their platform. We'll be going through Cambium assessments. There's now the new vendor for NJSLA. The promise is that this test will be adaptive. All right, for example, our students through iReady are experiencing that in regards to the questions getting either harder or easier as they answer them versus that stagnant flow of question after question after question with only being two copies of, of course, those assessments, or three in most cases for the original NJSLA through Pearson. All right, so what's happening with it really quick? This fall, all right, we're already going to start the field test for the NJDOA. Late October for the elementaries, Macapin and the high school will be taking place most likely in November, Macapin at So the students aren't getting paper copies from West Milford showing how they scored, and they, of course, received those several weeks ago. Level one, if you did not meet expectations, right, six fifty to six ninety-nine, level two, partially met, seven hundred to seven twenty-four, level three, approaching, seven twenty-five to seven forty-nine, and of course, level four, met expectations, seven fifty to eight oh nine, level five, exceeded, eight ten to eight fifty. All right, science, same thing, level one, level two, three, and four.
That's what I realized when we edited this presentation, I deleted all of the slides that everyone else has to talk about the whole time, and it comes right back to me. There you go. All right, um, so cohort analysis, so, uh, when we talk about cohort analysis, that's in the past, we would have, uh, we probably would have had ten slides on this, and we would have had slides that compared same grade level, year after year, that same grade, different students, so third grade to third grade. Tonight, we've only included those in your personal packets and then the one that is public. We're not going to go into those, um, you know, publicly right now, because we're going to talk about cohort, cohort analysis. And to remind everyone, cohort analysis is same students, different grades. So we believe this is probably our best indicator, uh, in our younger grades, where we have implemented new programs like Wonders, like Eureka, like iReady. We are hoping that, you know, with the growth that we've seen from our third and fourth grade students, that, uh, it's going to, you know, lead into the work that we're doing with our fifth graders. I think when I first presented, especially Eureka, grade three to grade four, we see great growth in our grades, uh, grade six to seven, we see great growth in grades seven to eight. We see, um, not enough growth in our eighth to ninth grade. Uh, we, we, and when we get towards the end of the, uh, presentation, you'll see some of the initiatives and plans that we have, especially for our, um, current sophomores. Uh, our ninth grade scores from last year were probably the, um, area of concern that we wanted to focus on and talk about, but we do see positive growth, um, you know, as we move, especially in, um, you know, those, those younger grades. This is the percent not meeting or partially meeting for math. And if you, if the, um, if the numbers are too small for you to see on the screen, the, uh, you can get the full slide on your, um, on your device to the presentation, so that you can see a little bit, uh, a little bit closer. Percent meeting and exceeding. On this particular, uh, on this particular slide for math, it shows a, uh, a five-year review of the, of the, um, of the cohort. Again, some themes, we see tremendous growth in our, um, younger, uh, younger grades, grades three and four. We see great growth from sixth to seventh grade. Uh, we're seeing great growth in algebra and geometry at the middle school level. Uh, we believe that's a, uh, direct correlation to how we have realigned some of those, uh, some of those courses, just to give you a little, uh, I guess, a little background and a little reminder. We had, uh, we had a sit, situation that, um, you know, dated back to the days just before the pandemic, where there was a realignment of coursework in the, um, middle school that, um, accelerated students into classes like Algebra One, that may have done so without meeting those prerequisite requirements to, to successfully perform at those levels. In the last three years, we've realigned everything, and we believe we now have a great process in place that puts the kids in the class that meets their needs and, and best challenges them and, um, assesses for the prerequisite skills to be in those courses. So, um, you know, we see great growth at, at the middle school level for algebra and geometry, and that is also carried on into geometry at the high school and Algebra Two at the high school.
Okay, and worth mentioning on the eighth grade math assessment, that the eighth grade numbers are absent the kids who are pulled out from the higher level math courses. That's why you are seeing a lower number there, but a part of it is because the highest performers in math are not in those numbers, whereas they were in those numbers in the prior years as they were in lower grade levels. But now they're in a higher level math, so they're, there was, those kids are showing up in the Algebra One and Geometry numbers.
Now, this is a slide that shares our, um, analysis of percent proficiency by program. So that means, um, students in our ELL, MLL, um, program, free and reduced lunch category, uh, section five oh four, special education, uh, general education. Um, one area that we have a very, um, particular focus on this year with a lot of changes, not only with, um, uh, not only, um, personnel, but also with the findings that we had for the, um, the audit that we brought in last year to take a look at all of our special credit, special ed programs across the board. We are acting on those recommendations. We are looking at all of our, um, processes for not only, uh, how to make sure that students in our special education, uh, settings, whether it's a resource room, in-class resource, self-contained, et cetera, that they are receiving grade level instruction. And that is the, um, I guess that's the drum you're going to hear us beat from this point forward, is that every student deserves to have access to grade level expectations, and we're making sure that that is, um, continues to be present and even more present in our special education programs going forward. It also, um, is a good side effect of the, uh, of the audit, for us to take a close look at what we're doing in things like INRS and multi-tiered systems of supports, so that, uh, we know that the students who are getting recommended for, um, special education truly need it, and that we're not, um, that we're not missing any steps in the process, so that our, our students have more access to the, um, you know, least restrictive environment, which is their general education setting. If you take a look at our general education, that, uh, our students are, um, you know, performing at a, at a rate that we are, you know, we're happy with and want to see, uh, see continuation. We want to see that same growth and that same level of proficiency from all of our, uh, from all of our districts, uh, all of our district groups. And that's part of the, uh, presentation towards the end with some of the things that we're, uh, some of the things that we're working on. Uh, this slide is a representation of the, uh, science scores, so this is the, um, I'm just going to go to skip to the last column, where it shows the percentage of students who are, um, so this column shows the students who scored in the range of one and two. That's our, uh, that's our lowest score, so we had a, um, a small increase in students scoring one and two at our fifth grade level, but we had a, um, decent drop, significant drop in both grades eight and grades eleven in students scoring in scores one and, uh, scores one and two. And that's the, ultimately, the goal, is that we are continuously moving students to that next column or, or to clo, closer to proficiency or above as they, uh, as they, you know, participate in our courses. Uh, this last column, this is the change in students who are meeting, um, meeting or approaching expectations. So we had growth in fifth grade, slight growth, but we had, um, good gains in both eighth and eleventh grade for students who were meeting, uh, meeting expectations in the science assessment. We don't have true cohort analysis, as the, um, uh, the state assessment for science was, um, hasn't been, I guess, we've been taking it for years, but it hasn't been, um, being reported in, in this regard. So now, science is going to continue being part of this presentation and the requirements that we, um, you know, participate in this, this type of presentation going forward. This is just another way of looking at our achievement levels by program. So at the bottom, you can see this is our ELL, MLL, so our multilingual learners, free and reduced lunch, five oh four, special education, general education, and then you see the, um, the color coding for exceeding, meeting, approaching, partially, and not meeting. So again, we pointed out that we are looking to do better in our, um, in all of our settings, but we are dedicating significant resources with professional development, with, um, you know, action plans at the middle school, with bringing in, um, support for co-teaching, with bringing in, um, other, other sources of diagnostic tools to, to pinpoint specific weaknesses and standards, uh, looking at curriculum reviews to make sure that we are, by program for math, very similar, um, very similar results, although our, um, you know, um, you know, although we are adapting for students in different special education or self-contained settings, that those adaptations are also ensuring access to grade level standards. ELA is still outperforming in math, and we've got, we've talked a lot about the things we are doing in math within the programs that are, that are in place. So it's a, it's a, um, uh, very elaborate process that we are undertaking. This is the, and I won't, I won't steal Dr. Belsor's thunder for his presentation at the end about, uh, the things we're doing in middle school, high school math, but we are in year one of a complete renovation for our middle school math program. So these scores are, um, indicative of, um, you know, some of the, uh, some of the professional development that we've been using that didn't yet have a program in place to, you know, access those new skills for our teachers. Again, another way of looking at it, efficiency by program. Before I turn it over to our content area supervisors, um, for pointing out some of the, you know, the, the next few slides are the, uh, things that we are celebrating and looking to, um, you know, to build upon. Are there any questions about the, uh, slides to this point? We'll do, we'll do answer, question and answer at the end for anything that, that comes up. All right, at this point, I'd like to, oh, this is me. Any, uh, any elementary question? All right, I'll do this. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, we have, um, you know, great pride in the things that we've been doing, especially when we take a look at grades three and four. That is, so a grade three student last year, they had, that is the end of their, uh, second year of implementation with the Eureka Math Squared program. This is the, uh, same thing for our fourth and fifth graders. However, our third graders, they began with Eureka Math Squared as a, uh, at a second grade level. Uh, that was along the same time that we had been beginning our, um, training with Nancy Schultz at Conker Math. So we are extremely happy with the growth that we've seen in our grade three and four students in comparison to the state, and we believe, looking at like the data and the, um, feedback we get from staff, the, what we know about implementing a new program, that those, uh, scores are going to follow through as, uh, as our students have more exposure to the new program. So, um, although the, they are all in the same year of implementation, a fifth grade student began with Eureka Math Squared in fourth grade, and that's after a K through three experience using GoMath, which was, um, you know, there was the sticker on the book that said it was aligned with, aligned with NJSLS, but, um, the program that we now have in place is more aligned with the best practices that we're working on and training with Nancy Schultz at, at Conker Math. So, uh, I think, um, you know, there is a few years of background knowledge that students have to overcome when they, when they begin a new program. Uh, language arts, we are extremely excited again with, with grades three and four. Um, our, uh, our growth again in fifth grade, the, uh, third and fourth grade students, last year was their first year using the, uh, the Wonders program, so we are excited to see how that carries, uh, how that carries through, giving the teachers, uh, access to, to more materials, materials that are more closely related to, uh, to the, uh, New Jersey Student Learning Standards for, for language arts, um, giving them access to the, all the materials they need in the classroom. That's one of the, I guess, um, concerns we had, which led to our, our significant change, was that through our balanced literacy, we were, although we were one of the few districts that, that used balanced literacy, that, uh, had a, a very, um, uh, very careful approach to maintaining our work with phonics, that we still didn't have a uniform implementation across the district for language arts in all of our elementary settings. Now we believe we have that, and this is the results of one year in, in those grades. And again, as they, as our students are using those materials more often, uh, we feel that we're going to, uh, have tremendous results. Dr. Melos?
All right, back into middle school, here we go. Middle school math, meeting exceeding. Uh, we are very, very thrilled and excited by the progress we made in 2025, and I speak for the entire staff when I say that. Twenty twenty-four, grade six, thirty-two point three, the state was at thirty-six point two. Obviously, we're jumping up now, grade six, forty point six, the state, of course, at thirty-nine point eight. Grade seven, eighteen percent versus thirty-seven point five, jumping to twenty-seven point six against a state, of course, at thirty-eight point seven. A state only growing a, a little over a point. Algebra one, thirty point three versus thirty-nine point seven, and of course, Algebra one, this past year, sixty-five point one, against a state at thirty-seven point nine. And then my favorite one of all, geometry, forty-seven point one versus forty-nine point one. Macam Middle School, one hundred percent versus the state at fifty-six. Arguably, you can say we have the highest score in the nation. Just throwing that out there, a hundred. One more time, one hundred percent for geometry education here. All right, uh, middle school, but, uh, in all seriousness, shout out, of course, to our, uh, to Ms. Patterson at the high school, uh, because again, she took in our middle school students. You know, last year, she's doing the same this year, of our students going across the street, taking that course at the high school, and then, of course, returning to the middle school, obviously, for, for periods here. So it's been a great process. A big thank, of course, of Dr. Beth Belsor as well, um, in that, in that, uh, process. All right, middle school, of course, ELA, meaning exceeding, grade seven, forty-five percent against, and fifty-four in grade seven, and that jumped to fifty point five, the state at fifty-seven, against decent growth there by grade seven. Of course, grade eight, forty-five point one, the state at fifty-two point nine, and grade eight jumping to fifty-three point nine, and the state at fifty-seven point one. So a year of growth altogether. Shout out to, of course, Mrs. West, all of our ELA teachers, for the tremendous work they did, uh, preparing our students for this assessment. All right, Mrs. Jones?
Hi, before I get into the noteworthy achievements for the high school, I wanted to go over the difference between the NJGPA and the NJSLA, because that, it's kind of important in terms of our testing on the high school level. So the NJSLA measures the progress that students make every year on the standards that they're supposed to be making in that year, grades three through nine. Um, it's used to inform our instructional... Mac Middle School, one hundred percent versus the state at fifty-six. Arguably, you can say we have the highest score in the nation. Just throwing that out there, a hundred. One more time, one hundred percent for geometry education here. All right, middle school, but in all seriousness, shout out, of course, to Ms. Patterson at the high school, because again, she took in our middle school students. You know, last year, she's doing the same this year of our students going across the street, taking that course at the high school, and then, of course, returning to the middle school, obviously, for periods. So it's been a great process. A big thank, of course, of Dr. Beth Belzer as well in that process. All right, middle school, of course, ELA, meeting, exceeding. Grade seven, forty-five percent against, and fifty-four in grade seven, and then jumped to fifty point five, the state at fifty-seven, against decent growth there by grade seven. And of course, grade eight, forty-five point one, the state at fifty-two point nine, and rate jumping to fifty-three point nine, and the state at fifty-seven point one. So a year of growth altogether. Shout out to, of course, Mrs. West, all of our ELA teachers, for the tremendous work they did preparing our students for this assessment. Mrs. Johnson.
Hi, before I get into the noteworthy achievements for the high school, I wanted to go over the difference between the NJ GPA and the NJ SLA because it's kind of important in terms of our testing on the high school level. So the NJ SLA measures the progress that students make every year on the standards that they're supposed to be making in that year of grades three through nine. It's used to inform our instructional practices, our curriculum decisions. It is not tied to graduation requirements. However, going back to grade's little history lesson, in two thousand nineteen, when NJ SLA was introduced, it, like PARC, was part of the requirements for testing, getting a score, and graduation in high school. All right, in two thousand twenty-three, NJ GPA was introduced, and there was a slight difference. With PARC and NJ SLA, you can take that grade, that score from grade nine, ten, or eleven. With NJ GPA, they're not allowed to use the NJ SLA score. So the only replacement scores that they can get for NJ GPA are from PSAT, SAT, ACT, and AcuPace for assessment. So there's a disconnect now between the NJ SLA and the NJ GPA for students. They look at NJ GPA as the one that's important for them to do well on. In a sense, this makes sense as we go through this material. The NJ GPA is really designed to measure the student's readiness for post-secondary success for the things they want to chase after, whether it's a four-year college or a two-year college, because it measures career readiness standards. The results can highlight whether students are on track for college-level coursework, or whether they need additional support before high school graduation, moving on and on to the college level. So NJ GPA results are reported to the state, the district, and the school levels. They are used by the NJ DOE in school performance reports and accountability measures. So they are important to us as well, not just the students, but to us as administrators, because those scores count. The results influence our ratings, they influence our program planning, and our intervention supports. So in terms of NJ SLA, highlighting what our students achieved this year. In math, for example, the algebra two students had a significant increase in scores on the levels four and five, those meeting and exceeding expectations, improving by nearly twenty-four percent. In science, as mentioned earlier, the students scoring a level three were higher, increased by just about ten percent. Moving on.
All right, also, resources for parents, very, extremely important, actually. We, for the first time, the NJ DOE has actually created a students and families portal, a little different from that parent portal that we had, where you had to put the code in from the ISR and obviously get onto the site. So this now actually has, it's readily available, so I do want to give a plug for this portal. Right now, if you were to go in there, you would have the opportunity to actually check out practice tests. So your child can take practice tests through the portal just to get themselves ready, obviously, not really for the field test, or really more for the real thing as they, as we get closer to the spring. And again, that same window will be in play. The last week of April, of course, will be the opening of NJ SLA again through Cambium, and will end May thirty-first with makeups for the NJ SLA assessment. All right, and of course, that New Jersey Score Report Card and Guide, sorry, and Parent Portal are also available. They still have the old portal, too, if you do want to get access to your child's scores. So if you do, if you did plug in that code from the ISR, you actually can see scores from previous tests as well, again, through the NJ DOE.
The next few slides are going to talk about the initiatives we have in place to continue, continue the growth that we see and to also try to remedy some areas that we know need improvement. So we are continuing with what's working, and that is sending our teachers to professional development with Conker Math and Nancy Schultz. We have seen, you know, tremendous success within that process. We are at a point now, we're sort of at a maintenance level now, where all of our teachers have completed the two-year training at her, at her location for standards-based best practice instruction, where she has worked with our teachers, worked with our curriculum, have, you know, embedded some additional work, worked on some realignment in the curriculum to make sure that we are covering, covering the standards that we need to cover in advance of the, in advance of the state assessment. So we are going to continue what's working in that, in that sort of maintenance level. Right now, the only people that we are sending, which is a much cheaper cost than we have had over the last four years, is now it's for new staff and for teachers who are changing grade levels. So we're making sure that we didn't just do this initiative and then walk away, that we're making sure that we are maintaining and growing and that teachers who are new to our district are getting the same thing that their peers had when they, when they, when they entered. And if you move a grade level, you're getting the support that you need in that regard. Often with Conker Math, if we have a, just for an example, if a teacher moves from a fourth grade to a third grade setting, Nancy's been great with us to review all of the offerings at that grade and then only send that teacher to the standard sessions that she believes they need, because there's a lot of redundancy in crossover in grades. Sometimes, if you're going drastically from a, like a fifth grade to a first grade, you would probably need that entire, you would probably need that entire series of professional development sessions, which spans over a two-year period. So we are maintaining that. We are in our third year of the Eureka Math Implementation. Feedback from staff has been, has been positive. Feedback from students has been positive. We've seen positive growth in our, in our scores for the students who got it at the right age. As we grow, we anticipate tremendous scores, tremendous growth in our scores for our fifth graders after those students are coming into that, into that series and that type of vocabulary that they're using. We are also in the third year of implementing iReady. Our growth in iReady has been, has been significant. It's, you know, largely embraced by our teaching staff at this point. It's more along the lines of how do we, how do we build on the initiative and fine tune? One of the conversations that we've had with iReady over the years was that, you know, making sure that when they're working in their MyPath, that their MyPath, that they are getting closer placement to their grade level, their grade level instruction. And now, that's something that is built into iReady. So it has adaptive features where if a student uses a diagnostic tool and finds that they are measuring below grade level, that the new, the new iReady MyPath will address the standards of weakness at the lower level and then also move them towards grade level, towards the grade level standards in between the, in between the diagnostics. So that's a, that's an upgrade that iReady did that we think is going to be benefit, real positive benefit for our students. We are maintaining our structure with, you know, our grade level, grade level analysis and our meeting, meeting teams and talking about our initiatives and our teachers working together. We have some similar things in place, and I will go into iReady again. Same, same sort of process applies to what we're doing in ELA with iReady. We're in the second year of our implementation with Wonders. We maintain that same process for PLC discussions and grade level meetings and those types of, those types of, you know, high-level professional, professional discussion. We have implemented some new things that are, you know, just this year going forward. Last year, we implemented them as we just were getting access to them. This year, we're starting from the beginning, where our Linkit platform, I've mentioned that many times in this room, we used to use, before we had iReady in place, we used to use that for NJ SLA benchmarking. We abandoned that because we thought iReady was better. But now they do, since iReady does not provide us with science practice, Linkit has science benchmark assessments that are directly tied to preparing for the NJ SLA assessment for science. So our students will be taking those three times a year in those grades that, in those grades that are targeted. We are also in the process of, you know, I'm calling it a pilot because they're pricey, and I'm gonna, we're gonna implement them for this year. I don't know if we're gonna implement them going forward just because of the costs associated with it. But if we see the growth and the gains, and it's doing its best for kids, then I'll, then I'll look to, you know, I'll look to maintain the structure. It's the Knowing Science 3D Model Assessment Project Program. So I'll talk about, this year, as we're talking more about science, we're going to talk about 3D modeling. And there's a, it's not what you would imagine a 3D model is. It's, it's more of a discussion of the dimensions of science education. You know, before the Next Generation Science Standards came out, science had always had that approach to both students' learning through discovery, a lot of interaction, a lot of hands-on, a lot of practical sort of applications. When the Next Generation Science Standards came out, the state tried to define it through the standards. And that has been the growth for the last however many years since Next Generation Science Standards came out and then became New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science. This has been the focus, and this is what our Knowing Science Program is built on, disciplinary core ideas, science and engineering practices, and cross-cutting concepts. So it's the what, how, and what did you learn experience through, through science. I'm not going to go through the example. You can read that for yourself, but it's in the, it's in your handout just so you get an idea of what it looks like in a very simple, a very simple idea looks like for what 3D modeling is. Again, the reason I'm sharing that is that's, although we are teaching in that regard, and we're using Knowing Science, we haven't been practicing, in my opinion. We haven't been practicing in a format that the state is looking for on an assessment. So it's one thing to do those, those, you know, those activities and experiments in the classroom with hands-on learning. It's another thing to sit on the device and then take it in a state test format. So that's what we're now putting into place in a very, a very widespread way, and I think we're going to see significant growth.
All right, back to Macabre Middle School. Just really three major ideas to share with the board tonight. Number one, obviously, our PLC meetings are in play. This is an opportunity for our staff against Johnson's ELA and mathematics, but we're talking interdisciplinary approach, whether, again, it is an elective teacher to ELA, math, social studies, you name it. They have the opportunity to just analyze data in team meetings. And one piece, of course, you know, Mrs. West and I have been working on is that interdisciplinary writing piece, which is making sure our kids continue to write. It's just that symbol, write, write, and write. All right, reading and writing goes a long way. We know that since kindergarten. We want to continue that process, of course, in the middle school. Our environment, for sports to go up the way that it is, especially at the middle school, it comes down to the entire building working as a team. That overall decrease in discipline has led to, obviously, more academic time. The opportunity, all right, see, for example, our middle school suspension numbers, our high school suspension numbers all decreased. And I'm going to continue to argue it is due to two things. One, taking phones away from kids in the classroom, in the building, in the hallway, as well as getting them outside to simply run around and be kids in the sun and outside. All of that has led to that success we've experienced, obviously, in two thousand twenty-five. And it's awesome. So I do shout out to the entire building for making this happen. And we're looking for more great things to come in two thousand twenty-six. The action plans and building goals, of course, for this year, we want, yeah, we are targeting instruction. Mr. Novak mentioned it before, especially within special education. We are looking to, of course, train our teachers and continue training our teachers within that co-teaching model. All right, that professional development also will consist of hopefully bringing in, whether it's outside vendors or in-house. Again, we do have several individuals in Macabre School that have co-taught before, whether it's on the elementary level or, of course, in grade seven and eight, to continue practicing with each other on what this should look like within a forty-two-minute period. All right, decreasing excessive absence. If our kids are here, they can learn. If they can learn, they can do great, obviously, not just on assessments, but to socialize with their peers, to get to know each other, and ultimately prepare themselves for the high school. All right, our intervention meetings that are actually, one we had today as well, to bring our parents in, have those same conversations on whether it's an excessive absence, how to help your child, right, through the IRNRES process, the RTI process. By helping that student, searching that tier-one foundational growth piece, we can at least get that student in a better place, as you saw, especially with those scores. You look at that tier-three approach, or at least that level-three approach in NJ SLA. Could you imagine if you took the students that are in that yellow code, if you want to use that term, and you moved them over just four points? You would see a significant growth, again, just speaking for the middle school alone. So a lot of those scores would increase. And again, we do want to target that instruction as well. And again, testing culture, so unfortunately, this is the year of the test. We have been hit with it all. And I want to thank Mr. O'Donnell, my partner in crime, because we've both been selected for the NAEP, believe it or not, Marshall Hill and Macabre. Congratulations, Mr. O'Donnell. We will be a part of the nation's report card in two thousand twenty-six. So if the scores are not great, go see Mr. O'Donnell. If they're great, come and applaud me, appreciate it. But no, we will be a part of that. And that process is, just to let the community know, our students will be selected. Again, these are grade eight students, at least for Macabre School. For Marshall Hill, it'll be grade four. They will take a sample, it's on our entire grade level. They will take a sample of those students. The NAEP reps actually will come to the building to administer that test. Our devices will be utilized for it. When it's all said and done, unfortunately, we will not know how our kids did on the national report card. But the cool, really cool part, I just want to make sure we are all on the same page with this. If they do decide to take the NAEP, it's not forced upon them, but if they decide to take it, they will be awarded, again, a civic certificate, essentially saying, thank you for taking this test for your country. And that, yes, can be used as volunteering hours for, again, junior honor society, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So again, NAEP. All right, NJ SLA field test, just one more time, just in case nobody heard this before. Yes, that will take place later this month in elementary for Macabre Middle School. We will take it the week before teachers convention. The unfortunate part with this, too, is that when this test is all said and done, and this is across the board, we will not have any scores from this like you would from a Star Strong or any other, of course, assessment that we take in the fall. Really, again, it is only for the purpose of seeing, hey, does Cambium assessments, does our program work? Can our accommodations be shown appropriately on the screen? Will students have the ability to log in, log out, especially through the app? So just, again, your basic features, again, at least through technology, and really just making them comfortable, as well as their staff comfortable, to log in and out, pausing the test, locking the test, and so forth. And then by the time the real thing, of course, occurs in the spring, then it is now time, of course, to test for real, if you want to use that. All right. Dr. Belzer.
Well, I'll be brief. The theme for math is we have positive momentum, so we want to keep that momentum and continue to grow. So a lot of the things we did are working. So we continue with our course resequence changes, continue the data place matrix placements for students that put kids in the right class. That's all showing us working. But one big change is what Mr. Novak mentioned earlier. We are in year one of using the Amplify Curriculum. That's for grades for six, seven, and eight. Hope is that that's going to further drive our growth and increase our scores even further. But we've had great growth. I mean, the Macabre articulation with the high school, especially with geometry, has proven to be a huge success. Literally, every kid met or exceeded expectations, which we can't ask for more than that.
Good evening. Sorry for the very tiny print on this slide. And I will try not to be redundant. As we discussed, and as everyone has discussed so far already this evening, we're continuing the standards-based best practice professional development. Already in September and October, we've reviewed and discussed the NJ SLA evidence table for grades six, seven, and eight, the school performance report. And we have also dabbled in the new sample items on the Cambium platform. As Dr. Bellos said, they are making a switch from Pearson to Cambium, and the interface is different, so the sooner everyone gets familiar with that, the better. And the student training module for teachers to work with so they can help students become a little bit more interactive with that before the test. We are in year three of iReady Pro. Actually, they upgraded the interface to make it a little bit more developmentally appropriate for middle schoolers, which has been a very nice change. And the MyPath implementation continues. We are doing this year, I think this is a highlight, a comprehensive review of our sixth through eighth grade curriculum and materials this year. We have begun again in September, October, exploring reval- We have begun, again, in September, October, exploring reevaluating our current reading selections, some of our digital resources and platforms, for example, NowRit Inc. for the writing support component, and we will write as something else that we have been having students try. And, of course, working with still lining across grade levels. We're beginning exploration of potential alternative or supplemental materials, and certainly curriculum updating that would come with that. I am sending teachers to, and they are stepping up to volunteer, actually, to Drew University for an AI in writing symposium, and it's their year, so they can turnkey some of that information. The focus for us is going to be on meaningful use of AI and ethical considerations. And then, of course, for myself, I continue with my own professional development by attending the Northern New Jersey English Roundtable on a regular basis and other PD meetings, so that I can share best practices and, of course, hear about all of the best practices that are out there. And in light of that, we're, we're pretty much on the same page as many of those districts.
Sharon, can I just ask you a question? This Drew University AI writing symposium, could you explain a little bit about what really that is?
Sure. So for the third year, Drew has been offering this to teachers, because, of course, AI is something that we're continuing to talk about for the past two and a half years. The focus for English teachers is for students to maintain authentic writing, and we're trying to look at ways, and I think I presented last year about how we did a department-wide lesson across all the English departments, so that students could become immersed in self-assessment for ways in which they can use AI in the classroom and ways in which they would not be able to use AI in the classroom. For example, a way that they could use it is for idea generation, and then they would take that idea and develop and write themselves their own thesis statement, for example. Writing a thesis statement with AI is something that is not acceptable, for example. So it's conversations like that that our teachers will be having with other Northern New Jersey teachers in the, at Drew University, and then they can come back and turnkey some of the findings and discussions, and perhaps some tools and ideas. And they can certainly share some of the things that we've done. When I've gone to the roundtable and shared that we had a department-wide lesson, that was apparently, you know, like, an exciting idea, and they thought that that was something that they didn't want to try in their own buildings.
Is AI, do, do teachers find a problem with students' papers and AI? Are students kind of depending a little bit too much on AI and not enough of their own work?
Sometimes we are running into that as an issue. So through the policy that you all just approved, the new AI and acceptable use policy, in fact, we just went through that with the high school English department yesterday during our department meeting, and we were talking about protocols for the, you know, what happens when, and how can we continue to make the use of AI a learning experience and not a gotcha? So we're continuing, it's just an ongoing conversation. I think the best start, and I'll continue to talk about the same thing I talked about last September, was we need to continue to educate them, and we have to empower them to self-assess, so that they know when it's acceptable use and when it's not. We also share with them the consequences. When they go into higher education or, you know, like a job, those are going to be situations where the consequences are going to be a little more steep. So we want to make sure that they understand that there are, there are many, many times where they need to have authentic writing, and we talk all the time about how writing is evidence of thinking, and we need to be able to see evidence of your actual thought. I can't assess things that are not your authentic writing or your authentic thinking. And so we continue with that mantra of writing is thinking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. So once again, we have positive growth. We want to continue this growth. One of the things I'm seeing is that the changes at Macabre are starting to trickle into the high school. The Algebra II, did I go the wrong way?
No, you're good.
Oh, okay. So the Algebra II growth, I think, as a result, at least partially from having the right students placed freshman year in that Algebra II class, as a result of our resequencing and our placements. So that's going to continue to trickle in as more students move from Macabre to the high school, so I think that'll show a positive growth in that regard. I'll continue with Conquer Math for students, for teachers that come and switch grade levels or new teachers of staff. In department, we look at data analysis, look at the released items, looking at how their tests are graded, and, you know, the, the average reports that we get from the state tests. Everything seems to be working, so we want to continue with our positive momentum.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have a question. When, when a child doesn't have, meet a benchmark, how do you address that?
When you say...
Like, when you do the assessment before the test, you know, they have benchmarks that lead up to that test? How do you address the deficiencies that the kids have?
So teachers can individualize their attention, looking at the standards that students may have not done well on. When the, the state does release item analysis reports, we can see the individual standards that students struggle with, and we can look at targeting those in the classroom.
But how do you address it with an individual student who's struggling?
Sure, that, that's by the teacher in the classroom, where they can, you know, differentiate their own instruction to that, what's the student, depending on what they are struggling with, you know, with whatever that content may be.
Thank you.
One of the things, Mrs. Dwyer, the, Mrs. West mentioned the evidence, evidence statement tables.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to follow up on Dr. Belzer, Mrs. West mentioned evidence statement tables. That's something that the math department also uses to take a look at. It's like item analysis. They get a, they get a great review of the particular standard that shows up as being a weakness or a strength in a particular course. So we'll get Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, evidence statement table that shows very visual display for, you know, what standards we find that are, that are weak. So when Dr. Belzer was talking about differentiating instruction, when they see those standards being weak, they will adjust those to, you know, hit them more frequently in their, in their lesson plan. And that's something specifically that I know the secondary's teachers worked on with Nancy Schultz, was how to take a look at the evidence statement table from the previous assessment and make sure that they build it, build it in. So that's work that they do ongoing with, with Nancy Schultz. And I know Dr. Belzer has pursued additional trainings through Conquer Math that weren't just the, you know, the basic get started, the two-year NJSLA, NJ Student Learning Standards, you know, best practices, that they are continuing, and they're doing, doing some of those great things. So not to, like, answer yours further, but I thought it was helpful.
If you'd explain. Thank you.
Round two of more tiny print. I'm sorry. And again, in an effort to be not redundant, but for continuity's sake, obviously, the strategies and the approaches that I'm using in grades six to eight with the ELA, I want to pull through for grades nine to 12, so we have that continuity. I won't read those again to you, but I will point out that we do look at the NJGPA evidence statement tables, very important. Again, as Mrs. Johnson said, that is our graduation proficiency assessment. We did see growth with students this year, this year from last year. We had eighty-one point six percent, I want to say, that were proficient. Last year, we were up to eighty-eight point six percent this year. So that was a really nice, a nice opportunity for growth, and everyone was really, you know, helpful and responsible for that as well. This summer, I'm pleased to say that we were able to offer a summer high school writing ready camp for our rising eighth and ninth graders. We had three teachers that were participating in that, Mrs. Petrasilo, Mrs. Ruglio, and Mr. Kybers, from, both of them from Macabre Middle School. It was a lovely experience for two weeks. Some students liked it so much the first week, they wanted to join and participate the second week, so that was nice. We will be offering, again, to target some of the instruction in those areas we need that we talked about earlier, after-school academic support program coming up. We will also be offering some Accuplacer support and testing opportunities for students. It's another avenue for students to meet those graduation proficiency assessment standards. Again, Drew University, I have some high school teachers attending that as well, who will also turnkey the discussion, who look a little bit different by school, but, again, meaningful use, ethical considerations is the focus there. And, again, attending the roundtable, it's such a wealth of information to be with colleagues across Northern New Jersey that are, you know, having the same conversations around English and writing and helping our students to love literacy the way we do. It's just a great experience, so thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. I do have one. On the NJGPA, is there, like, a portfolio assessment if they need some, you know, remediation?
Yes. So there are several pathways that they can take. They have to sit for the NJGPA as eleventh graders. If they do and they don't pass that, there are several alternative assessments, and then ultimately, if they don't have a score for those that's passing, they will do a portfolio assessment. I'm very pleased to say that the numbers of our students in English who have required the portfolio assessment has reduced tremendously since we began this process in 2015. We were down to sometimes two or three students, which is fabulous.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thanks.
Do you guys dance?
Close together.
You guys, like, do, like, the teamwork makes it?
We didn't plan, but we do have some non-tenure principals who might want to. No, but, you know, I think this, as I mentioned earlier, this is, is one of my favorites. Although it's hard to come up here and present scores, because they're not always the way we want them to be. We do have a, a lot of initiatives in place that we do see positive success and continued success, not just, it wasn't just luck that some of these scores were showing that progress. They're a, you know, they are a side effect and a result of the things that we've been doing and working hard together to, to do it. Last year, we, you know, we ended on that with the quote that says, you know, we're all trying to pull the same rope, so we, you know, kept that graphic here, talking about the teamwork that we all have. Going forward, there's a couple of questions about NJGPA, and Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. West included it in their presentation. We will be doing a presentation for the board, for, specifically for NJGPA, and then other, some other high school specific assessments, AP, SAT, those types of things. So, you know, you'll see that in the, in the near future. We are also going to be presenting on, you asked, Mrs. Dwyer, asked some good questions about the AI symposium. We are going to be doing an AI in education, how it pertains to West Milford, at a future, at a future board meeting, and we'll be discussing it in education committee meetings in the, in the future, so that you can get an idea of how these things are being used, because the growth is exponential. Most recently, I actually turned off AI in the elementary schools. So K through five students don't have access now to some of those tools that are, you know, providing some of those shortcuts, because as to Mrs. West's point, writing is evidence of thinking, did I paraphrase you correctly? Okay. That we want to make sure that that habit is formed first, thinking, and then the, the act of writing. In, you know, some of the personnel appointments that we have on the agenda tonight, we are looking to really embrace some early literacy initiatives and really, you know, double down on how we, how we interact with our K through three students and make sure that students in West Milford schools get absolutely everything that they need when they enter our schools, and that sets them up for success. I've talked in this room many times about how a third-grade reading level directly translates to a student's ability to acquire algebra readiness and, you know, third-grade reading level, and how it equates to Algebra I, Algebra I scores. So, like, we're taking all of those pieces of data, all of the research that we know that is available, and we're putting it together through a nice pre-K-12 sort of, sort of process here in West Milford. So we're in the, I guess, you know, in the first three years of, you know, significant change. I said, I think I said it to Peter at one of our meetings, if you're buying stock in West Milford, now's the time, because we are on the way up. And very excited for the people behind me who've been, who've been, you know, working in the trenches, and for all of our students going forward. So I know now is time, maybe, if you have any questions.
It was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great question.
All right, and that concludes our district administration report. Big thank you to our admin team for being here this evening, going through all that information. You know, I, I think there was a lot of effort put into trying to make sure that the information being shared was useful and what you as board members were seeking.
I don't have to say, this is the first year I'm distributed. Now, maybe it's because I'm a slow learner, but I think they made it very, very...
Yeah, but there was significant effort put into making sure that the information was easy to digest and so was clear and obvious. I think there's so much data that goes along with testing, that, that sometimes it can be hard to, to try to present all of that information, but then also make it easy to understand. So great job by, by all of them. Thank you.
Yeah, I was stuck too. Yeah. So special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Patagno? When you get it back.
I just have the September 16th workshop regular minutes for that meeting.
Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, September 16th, workshop regular meeting.
Second.
Alyssa, I hate to do this to you, but I was reading through the minutes from the previous board meeting, and I was quoted incorrectly.
Okay.
Under new business, so it was the Baptist School Night at the high school, not at UGL.
Got it.
Just to clarify.
I'll fix it for us.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mrs. Patagno?
I'm going to do an extension on this, because I'm not present.
Yeah, I'm going to stay also, because I, I was on vacation.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
With the two abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, so public, well, president's report, sorry. So not really anything. I just wanted to mention the Jen Powell Field Dedication from Friday. What an amazing afternoon it was. For those that weren't there, it was up on the field. They had the students completely circling and encompassing the field. Pipes and drums came out. It was, and even after the dedication, she was very popular for photos. She was very emotional. She gave a wonderful speech. It was just a wonderful afternoon. And then it trickled on, obviously, to a tailgate party and with food trucks. I didn't go to that, and then the football game. But it was a wonderful day to be a Highlander, I will say. So congratulations to Ms. Powell, and I can't wait to see it actually up there. I think it's going to be great. So that's it for my president's report, public comment. Anyone signed up to speak? Mrs. Patagno?
I have no...
Is there anyone who wishes to speak? This would be about agenda items only?
Motion to close.
Move closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? So now we will go on to the adoption of the agenda. So could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we're on to education. Mrs. Tovich.
Now it's my time to talk. Sorry, guys. I'd like to move items eleven point two to eleven point fourteen under education.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Patagno? This is the time we need discussion. Okay, here we go. Mr. Sotovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen? Gerish has also given seventeen years, six months. I just wanted to congratulate and thank you for all the time that you've given and wish you all the best in your next adventures. Thank you. Dr. Kitchen?
So along the lines of congratulations, I just want to draw your attention to thirteen point four, the first name in the table there. This elementary supervisor position is something we're really excited. It's a new position made possible by some of the title funds that we received, and I think it really ties into some of our goals for growth at the elementary level, but also in trying to help address meeting the needs of some of our students through our MTSS process. So really, really excited to introduce Maria Amoroso. She is here with us this evening. I think she has something she's going to say if I, or she just introduced herself, but first what I would like to also mention is, so Maria was actually in our applicant pool, our, we've spoken at length about how strong our applicant pool was for our elementary principal positions. We had far more qualified applicants than we had positions available, and Maria was among the tremendously strong applicants for that position. We really, at that time, were so excited to have an opportunity to work with her, and while that position didn't work out for us, we were so excited to see her back in the applicant pool for this position. I don't know if she's aware that we were so excited to see her back in the applicant pool for this position, but we really felt like the role that she's now stepping into was one that was going to be a great fit. I know a few of our board members had the chance to meet her through the interview process, so her content knowledge is what really shone through in both interview processes. So we really put her through the wringer, and she came out on top, sitting here with us today. So congratulations to Maria, and I don't know if you want to say anything to introduce yourself, but I just want to say thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say good evening, President Lockwood, Board Trustees, Superintendent Kitchen, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Novak, administrators, staff, families, and community members. Thank you. I am honored and grateful for this opportunity to serve the West Milford Public Schools as your new elementary supervisor. For the past eighteen years, I've worked in the Jersey City Public Schools as a kindergarten teacher, second-grade teacher, reading specialist, instructional coach, and for the past six years as a English language arts supervisor. In that role, I have led literacy initiatives grounded in the science of reading, supported hundreds of teachers through professional development, and aligned our practices to the New Jersey literacy framework. As I joined this team, I bring not only my experience, but a deep passion for building strong instructional systems, empowering teachers, and helping children reach their full potential. I look forward to collaborating to strengthen the literacy and math programs and to listening, learning, and growing together. Thank you for this incredible opportunity.
Thank you. I'm also appreciative of her perseverance. I literally gave her the wrong address to be here tonight. She made it here. So yeah, test number one, scavenger hunt, Fine Hunter Academy. When I gave her seventy.
In Jersey City.
So I think I sent her to Macabre. So I apologize for that. Thank you for getting here.
And as I look around the room, I see between board members, administrators, building level administrators, staff members who are in our audience sitting, I think there's at least eight of us who have met Maria through the interview process in the room here this evening, and I think, you know, I do believe I speak for everybody when I say we're super excited to have her because she's a great fit, and that really shone through in the interview. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on Personnel? Good, seeing none? Roll call, please, Mrs. Patagno? Mr. Stovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Are we voting on everything here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yes on everything, no on thirteen point two eight.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
Hold on because I just, I don't think we can vote on this, and I just...
You know, do you recommend it if someone's...
Yeah, so I need to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Not because I don't want to. I think you're lovely and you're going to be wonderful, but I have a conflict, so I don't want to do anything wrong, but it has nothing to do with you.
So you're not voting on it either?
I'm sorry, just on that.
Recommend it if said on thirteen point two eight.
Yeah, sorry for that one, sorry.
Thank you.
And how do you vote on it?
I'm thirty.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm thirteen point eight. Thank you.
Yeah, same for you.
Yeah, okay. Mrs. Ricono?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I, yes, except with the extension on item...
Thirteen point two.
Thirteen forty-two?
Thirteen twenty.
There's no thirteen forty-two.
Wait, the same as me, the same extension as me.
I got it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I got it, thank you.
Of the same conflict.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
I guess now is a more appropriate time to say congratulations. Congratulations, you're big on the agenda.
I was going to say that, but I didn't want to cut you off. You were rolling.
Welcome to West Milford. Listen.
I think either one of thirteen four is the right number.
Twenty-eight was not the right one.
That's my fault.
I know, and I'm like...
I take your blame for it. Thirteen four.
Yeah, that's not the right one.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, option finance, Mr. Lippi.
Uh, sorry. Moving for approval vote on fifteen point two through fifteen point one eight.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question. Well, I didn't, the maintenance contract's broken out here. The numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five is what we spent, twenty-five, twenty-six is what we intended to spend.
Yes, that's what we'll budget it.
And this is maintenance plan pretty much for windows and doors?
Uh, no, this is your, so they're just tracking all of your basic expenses, like if you are as simple as buying filters or you're trying to keep your schools maintained at the basic level. So there's four accounts that we look at to make sure all that's happening.
We will description of the page all the way there? Yes.
Well, that's what the state has.
I'm reading.
That's their, that's their data.
That's their data.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So let me think. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mrs. Patagno? Mr. Stovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Jergensen?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Markward?
I abstain from fifteen point nine and fifteen point ten, and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Ricono?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Committee reports and liaisons, is there anyone wishing to add anything to what is currently there?
Oh, I'm sorry. My meeting is not until Thursday night.
Okay.
So it'll be in the next...
In the next one, okay. And Mrs. Van Dyke?
My meeting was last night, and so I wasn't able to forward the minutes because I didn't have them.
Okay.
I will make sure that they're on, that I'll send them for the next...
Okay, and that, just to be clear, is for the WMA.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so old business. Any old business?
Move to close old business? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Any new business, Mrs. Dwyer?
I don't know if this is new business at all, but our district lost Bobby Dandero on Friday, and Mr. Dandero was, he was an icon in our schools. He was a gentleman. He was a lover of education. He was a lover of kids, and he did a lot for our children, and I think he needs to be recognized, and I'm saying. Thank you.
He was actually a teacher in Blythe many years ago, yeah.
Come on, you know his phrase? Old baby. Old baby.
They were, they were able to do a moment of silence at the Hall of Fame game while all of those coaches who worked with him so closely were there, so it was a very special moment.
That's good. Special man. He used to call me frickin' Prack.
He was a true class of best. And he left West, he retired from West Milford but never left us, and I...
Even moved into town.
And he really was a wonderful man, and he touched everyone. He will be missed.
Okay, that's not enough. Yeah, any other new business?
Yeah, I want to close it now. New business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment? Anyone signed up to speak in the second public? Anyone wishing to speak?
No, Mrs. Dwyer made the comment. I was going to make a bad comment there, but...
Please, public comment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An executive session? Would you have the need for an executive session?
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes? At eight...
I'll adjourn.
At eight forty-eight PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately thirty minutes, and action will not be taken, and we will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
We are. Any opposed? Okay, so we adjourn in from executive session. Thank you, everyone.